Good evening and welcome to the Pasco City Council Workshop Meeting. The city thanks you for attending and being part of our city government. Agendas are available at the end of the staff table and a detailed agenda package is available on the city's Pasco's website at www.pasco/wall.gov. If you have a mobile device with you tonight, we would ask you to mute it or turn it off so that the workshop is not interrupted. Please note, the seating within the council chambers has been reduced as a precautionary measure in an effort to reduce possible transmission of the new coronavirus. A hand sanitizer station is located near the entrance door. And at the back of the, at the back of the chambers and bathrooms are located right down the hallway on the right-hand side as you exit the council chambers for hand washing purposes. If you're feeling, if you're feeling ill, you may watch the city council workshop from the comfort of your own home. As it is televised live on Spectrum Cable Channel 191 in Pasco and Richland and is streamed on the city's Facebook page and YouTube channel. And with that out of the way, we'd like to get a call to the order and a roll call, please.
Alvarado.
President.
Barajas. Maloney.
Here.
Martinez.
Present.
Milne.
Here.
Roach. Serrano.
Here.
Thank you, thank you for the roll call. And if we'd all, please rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see here. Alright, well tonight, let's see, we go to number three of verbal reports from council members. Anybody have anything they want to report tonight? Hmm, go ahead, Mr. Mel.
So yeah, so on Thursday, I attended the Pasco Parks and Recreation Meeting and it was a really good meeting. Talked about how some of the youth programs have gotten more participation and they also talked about the mother-son event, which they said was really well attended. And yeah, and then today I did the Pasco Chamber, which was good. We talked about the Missoula floods and how it shaped the geography and the whole area here in Tri-Cities. So it was a, it was a good thing. Oh, and then I also need to do a shout out to Police Chief Ken Rosky. He was able to get me a last-minute police ride-along for downtown Pasco on Friday night. And so it was another eventful night and I was glad I was able to and Officer Shelton was really good. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Mr. Mel. If there's nobody else, we'll move right along to item four. And that, the first item under four is Arts and Cultural Commission interviews. And tonight is kind of a special night. Tonight is kind of a special night because we get to interview for our new Arts and Culture Commission that we're really excited to get started. So as some of the interviews are getting ready to step out, we are going to start first with Saul Martinez. Is Saul Martinez here today? Come on up. And it is so interesting to call my own name out. But come on, come on forward. It's okay.
Good evening. Hello, city council members and mayor. Thank you very much for having me.
Yeah, thank you very much. If you just give me a second to catch, yes, get my thoughts here ready to go. Let's see, where is it? Oh, what did I do with it? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm at the wrong place. Just give me one second, give me. Okay, so the Arts and Culture Commission is crea-, was created in November 2019. All positions are four term, four-year terms with the exception of the youth representative, which is a two-year term. Positions will be staggered to ensure continuity of the commission and the commission will advise the city council on matters related to public art and culture, including review and evaluation on matters pertaining to the acceptance, procurement, placement, and maintenance of public art. The commission will perform other functions as a city's primary resource in the matters of public art and culture. So the city is currently, the city council is currently seeking seven members to serve on the commission as either a community member, art professional, arts, or youth representative. So with that, we're gonna ask you a couple of questions. The staff will each ask you a question and you can respond. You know, there are no, there's really no right or wrong answers, but we just want to see and learn a little bit more about you and who you are and, and your, your passion and interest in, in this commission. So with that said, Mr. Maloney, do you want to start with the first question?
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you so much for coming down. It's really important to have people volunteering and I'm glad to see you put your name forward.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Though we all made, I think we all made the same joke about the mayor not being able to double-serve on commissions as well. It seems it's wrong. So my question to you today is, how do you think the community can be best engaged in the public art planning process?
Can you repeat the question? Sorry.
Sure. Yeah, how do you think the community at large can be, can best be engaged in the public art planning process?
It's a fantastic question. You know, I think there's just so much when it comes to having art in public spaces. Mission just be, you know, the mission of just to select few, to select that work. It's kind of important to have the voice and reflection, a mirror of the community itself.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Alvarado, you want to go next?
Sure. Sure. The question, we have a set of questions here, so we'll ask them those. One that I thought was interesting was this one. Thanks again for coming down.
Put on my mic. Yeah, thanks again for coming down. And the one, the one question I like to ask is art can be subjective. And what is pleasing to one may be displeasing to another. And there is artistic expression. So how would you work with the commission to balance these realities in a way that minimizes unfavorable responses to new public art?
That's also a fantastic question. I, you know, I work as a teacher, so I look at art with a critical eye always. You know, when art walks out of my classroom, I say that it leaves with my fingerprints, my signature. So I have to make sure that it's appropriate for, for all audiences. So that's the same thing with public art. I believe that once it's upon review, then it has to make sure it's, it hits many criteria. One of those is that it's appropriate for the space, also that it has longevity. But then also that it, that it's favorable by a majority of the population. I mean, we're never gonna have full consensus. Art is subjective. But as long as it reflects what people want and, and what we want to, to have represent Pasco, then I think that's the right way to go.
Thank you. Great. Mr. Roach, would you like to go next?
Yes, please. Thank you for applying and having the courage to come and interview in front of all of us. You and I have something in common. You teach at New Horizons. I used to teach there. And I think it takes a special kind of person to teach at that school. So thank you for the work that you do. I wanted to know from your perspective, what positive outcomes have you seen when you engage youth in art? What does it do? From your direct firsthand experience, what have you seen it done for, for youth?
Absolutely. You know, many of our kids come to us kind of beaten and just exhausted of, of life in so many different ways. And because of so many circumstances. So art allows them to, an escape. And also it's eye-opening because they're able to develop some emotional intelligence in the process of, of becoming aware of who they are and what they can be and how free they can be once they get a little bit of art in their hands.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Milne?
Thank you, Mr. Martinez, for coming out. Can you share with us some of the art projects or events you've been involved with and any takeaways from the success or failure of the project?
Oh boy, absolutely. Art is all about, you know, trial and error. I wouldn't say much of it is failure. I would say that much of it's a learning process. Me personally, I've been involved with quite a few art, art shows, solos, two-person shows, group shows. In terms of working with our students, I've provided some New Horizons art shows as well. And have given them ample opportunities to, to show throughout the community. But again, it's, it's never failure. I would say it's always a learning process. And even in those things where they didn't kind of go the way as, as expected, we have building blocks for, for, for the next time.
Alright, I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Serrano.
Mr. Mayor, and thank you, other Mr. Serrano Martinez. You mentioned building blocks. As part of the inaugural commission, you're gonna help establish the future of the work the commission will do. What strengths and skills, connections, resources, or expertise do you have that you think will help lay this ground?
Awesome, thank you. Well, I, I establish a lot of criteria within my own classroom. That's, that's one. But the other thing I do is I probably spend a quarter of my day, every single day analyzing, reviewing, looking at new art, old art, you know, you name it. I try to memorize dates, movements, you know, and, and one of my latest crazes is being very obsessed with contemporary work and deconstructivism. So being able to apply all of the past movements to build something new from that. So I would bring that expertise in. Always again, going back to that critical eye and making sure that everything is appropriate for, I mean, for the task at hand.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. And I have two real simple questions. The first one is, tell us a little bit about your background as it relates to art and why you applied for the Arts and Culture Commission. Like what, in general, why did you get interested in applying for this commission?
Absolutely. You know, I never thought I'd be in front of the city council talking about this. So I, I would have to go back to building blocks. You know, it all began with New Horizons. So this is the third school I work at. And just getting so involved with those kids, it's, it's no longer just a teaching profession. It's, it's a, you know, you learn to love these kids just because of what they could go through. So that immediately got me connected to this community. So in, in doing so, I've established a scholarship run to, to, to generate scholarship funds for kids of these circumstances to be able to make it to the next level. And in doing so, I got connected with people in downtown Pasco Development Authority here at the city of Pasco and in many other levels, including art galleries and other representatives. But I just accidentally kind of became an activist then. And I, and I love where this is all going because it just gets me so much more connected to the community, to the arts. And what better way to culminate that than to be potentially in an arts commission?
Thank you very much. And my last question is, the commission will typically meet monthly and likely for events sponsored by the commission. Do you feel that you have the time for such a commitment as this?
You said once a month?
It's once a month.
Oh, absolutely.
Typically.
Yes.
Okay, well, we appreciate you coming down. The council will give me their thoughts, Mr. Martinez.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, we do have one that I think we typically ask of all, of all boards and committees, which is a conflict of interest.
Well, that one, that one's, I actually talked to Zabel about that. And that one's actually a question on the application.
Just making sure.
Yeah. So there is nothing that you think there would be a conflict of interest? You don't have any you what? Any contract with anybody in the city that would be a conflict with, with being on this commission?
No, I think, no, I don't think so.
Alright, well, thank you very much. We will, we'll gather our thoughts and then we will set an appointment, maybe. And then your future, we'll let you know.
Well, thank you again for having me.
Alright, thank you. So, so real quickly before the next, the next interview comes in, yeah, I had that same question. And it's, it's a question that's on the application itself. So those are already answered all, all yes, or there's not gonna be a conflict of interest.
These are just guideline questions, though. We can ask some.
Well, well, I was actually gonna talk about that because normally, in the past, we've always asked the same questions. But in this case, with the Arts Commission, we're gonna have students versus community members and then artists. So they could, they should be relatively the same so that we can be consistent, at least with the two students and the, and the community members. Yeah, yeah, because there's only one artist. Does that sound right? Is that fair?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Now we can go ahead and bring the next one, please. That would be Ana Armijo. Hello, Ana.
Yes.
Come on up. State your name for the record, please.
My name is Ana Armijo.
Hello, Ana. Thank you for coming here tonight. We're gonna ask you a series of questions from the council.
Okay.
There's no right or wrong answer. You can just be relaxed. We just appreciate the fact that you're here and you're willing to be a part of this arts commission and thank you for coming tonight.
You're welcome.
So with that, I'm gonna ask Mr. Maloney if he has the first question.
Great. Thank you so much for coming. It's good to see you again.
You too.
So my question for you is, how do you think the community can be best engaged in the public art planning process?
Well, it would be presenting, you know, having more activities in relation to arts and engaging the community. And so I think that is one way that we can engage the community with having, offering them. It'd be music or art presentations, whatever.
So just a small follow-up. So in, in regards to the, the planning process of actually getting this out in front of this, how do you think we can best, maybe, how do you, do you think we can gauge the, the community? Just by presenting art or? Just want to follow up on that. Make sure I understand.
Maybe a survey of, you know, asking the community is what things they are interested in seeing, being available to them. So that would be one way.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Alvarado?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll ask the same question I asked of the, of the other candidate. And thanks again for coming down to City Hall. My question, I'm sorry. Oh, sorry. My question to you is, I heard my echo. That's what I thought. There was some form of feedback. So art can be subjective. And what is pleasing to one may be displeasing to another. And there's also artistic expression. So given that, how would you work with the commission to balance these realities in a way that minimizes unfavorable responses to new public art?
I guess discussion, you know, talking about what we have to present and what in, also with the responses that we have, that we get from the community, that would be one way of also. But I think communication is probably the key.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Mrs. Roach?
So since I asked a question off the, a little bit off the cuff last time, I'm gonna just keep it similar so that it's fair for everybody. So I just wanted to know what you think personally, how youth in our community would be served by having engagement in the arts and what your perspective is on that. How would they benefit?
And I, I've been thinking about that, you know, how do we engage the youth in regards to the arts? And I was thinking about murals, you know, within, throughout the community, in different areas of the community. I think that would be one way to engage the youth.
Thank you. Good question. Good question. Next, Mr. Milne?
Thank you. So can you share with us some of your art projects or events you have involved with and any takeaways from the success or failure of the project?
I'm not really involved a lot in arts. I am a board member with the Master Singers. Okay. And that's when I have started to become involved. So, and we have, we started, since I became a board member, we started the youth choirs with the Master Singers.
Okay.
And, but I am interested in becoming involved and I, I feel that, you know, within the commission, I can become more educated about it and contribute.
Okay, alright. I appreciate that. Thanks for your honesty.
Thank you, Mr. Serrano.
Thank you. And thank you for coming down here. So as part of the inaugural commission, you're going to help establish the future work of the commission.
Yes.
What strengths, skills, connections, resources, or expertise do you have that you feel would help bring this process forward?
Well, I feel that I'm well-connected to the community. I have lived in Pasco for over forty years. I am active in different aspects of the community. I get involved in a lot of different areas. So I think those are my strengths. One of my weaknesses again would be that I am not like in the arts, you know, world, but I am open and willing to learn.
Well, I certainly appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Barajas.
Thank you so much for applying. Thank you for being here today.
Sure.
As a member of the commission, you may be disqualified due to conflict of interest from being able to submit proposals for consideration by the commission if the proposal involves compensation by or through city. Does this present a problem or concern being that you're involved with the Master Singers?
I don't see that. At this point, I don't, I don't see that.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, thank you. I just have two simple questions. The first one is just gonna be a little bit of, you kind of answered them a little bit, but just in general, tell us a little bit about your background and how it relates to art and why you, why you applied for this Arts and Culture Commission?
My, my main reason for applying is to contribute to the, to the community. And so as, as I stated before, I'm not, my involvement within the arts, I'm not an artist. So, you know, it's not huge, but I am open to learning and offering and sharing my commitment to contributing.
Perfect. Well, we sure appreciate you coming and, and being with us and wanting to be a part of this because obviously you've been a part of Pasco already for many years. But one more question is, the commission will typically meet monthly and likely for events sponsored by the commission. Do you feel that you have the time for such a commitment?
Yes.
Perfect.
Yes, I'm self-employed and my children are adults, so.
Perfect. Well, thank you very much once again for coming. The, the council will give me their thoughts and then when we make a, an assignment, we'll let you know how it went and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so the next one is gonna be another community member. Ryan Bennett. Hello, Mr. Bennett.
Hi, how are you?
Great. You want to state your name for the record, please?
Sure. My name's Ryan Bennett.
Alright, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for wanting to be a part of this art commission and
Sure.
appreciate your time and, and your involvement with the city of Pasco.
Yeah.
The council will be asking you a series of questions.
Okay.
There's no wrong or right answers. Just share your heart and, and we'll ask you another couple of questions at the end and just do the best you can.
Sounds good.
Alright, we'll start with Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Bennett, for coming down and, and applying for to be part of this, this commission. So my question for you is, how do you think the community can be best engaged in the public art planning process?
Well, I think it's good that the public be really well-informed about what's coming up for art. I think it's really good that the public have some good engagement on the front end as far as either whether it be focus groups or kind of their input on what art they want to see. Being actually a resident of Kinneck myself, I can tell you how excited we are to have had a variety of roundabouts somewhat foisted upon us. And those, some people have really liked. I personally haven't been super keen on those. But I think if you have the right amount of community involvement at the beginning of the process and throughout the process, you can hopefully get as many people on board early, in the middle, and through as you can. So that, you know, you're trying to do something that you're trying to make the community better and you're trying to keep the community happy. And as, as you know, making everyone happy is impossible, but ticking people off is, is really easy. But for something like this, I think the goal is to try and do the most good with the least amount of ruffled feathers as you possibly can. And bringing, bringing the community along early and often is definitely a good part of that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Bennett. Thank you for coming down to Pasco City Hall. I, my question to you is, you know, art can be subjective.
Definitely.
What is pleasing to one may be displeasing to another. And there's artistic expression. So how would you work with the commission to balance these realities in a way that minimizes unfavorable responses to new public art?
Good question. So, for example, I know one of the things that I would love to see brought in, for example, would be perhaps a approach to urban art, specifically as it comes to some of the downtown buildings. For example, I'd love to see something possibly in the downtown corridor over along the railroad. I've consistently thought that that had the opportunity to be a great actual tourist attraction that could do that. But I know that urban art can be very polarizing. Because to some, it's just straight-up graffiti, no matter what you do. And so I think the trick is, is you have to really kind of tread lightly and you have to figure out, okay, how do we do that in such a way that you can still get the community to see it is not just one side of that, but then also get them to see the other aspects of that. And I think you have to be able to show the success stories of places where they brought those things along. And again, I think, I think that if you do those things right, I think it has the opportunity to be a great tourist and community development angle, as well as not just public art. Hopefully, if you do the art right, it should be something that actually generates revenue, tourism, and, and, and good public will.
Thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Roach?
Thank you for that candid answer and thanks for coming down tonight. I wanted to know how you think that youth could be better served in our community by being engaged in the arts?
Oh, great question. Well, to me, I think if you're going to engage youth, and I think that the Arts Commission has a great opportunity to engage youth. You know, I think when you look at some communities, I think when you actually involve art, you know, one idea just off the top of my head, you guys have one of the strongest boys and girls clubs in the community. That's a, that's a strong opportunity for private, or public-private partnership as far as an organization. And that would be something that this council or commission, I don't know how, how that's all gonna fly yet, but I mean, that's something that I would think if we were going to look at that, would be a great opportunity for those kind of partnerships to happen, is you look for those kind of places where you can get people involved. And getting kids involved in the arts is, is a great, great benefit. I mean, kids are natural artists anyway. And if you can do that and show them that, hey, you, I mean, I'm all for STEM. I'm not against STEM by any stretch. But there are some kids that are just not wired for STEM. And for them to understand that they can still actually have other avenues other than STEM and that there are people that are actually making a living, making art, that, that should, that could be something that some kid out there needs to hear.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Milne?
Thank you, Mayor. And so, Mr. Bennett, can you share with us some of the art projects or events you have been involved with in the past and any takeaways from success or failure of the projects?
Well, let's see. I have been involved with, golly, that's a, that's a very loaded question because I've been around a while. I'm forty-six. So, I mean, how far back do you want me to go? Do you want me to go back to like?
Just a simple shorter answer.
Ten sets in high school or what do you want to know? So I've been involved tertiaryly with an arts commission way, way back when. I don't even remember what year it was. It was back when I worked at the Tri-City Herald. And that was just, it was honestly bureaucracy. I wanted to tear my eyes out. And if, if, if this turns into that, I will probably resign fairly quickly. I've been involved in other things, including the Kinneck Art Walk. Um, I've been involved in other things, including um the uh Kinneck Art Walk. Um, I just recently helped the Richland Art Walk streamline some of their art process. So that they could um get artists to participate without having to download a PDF form, I just helped them. Get it to where they could just enroll their artists online. Um but yeah, I'm just about trying to make things to where it's. Easy for people to do things and get involved with, with the least amount of just. Soul-killing, um, uh, just bureaucracy as possible.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Serrano.
Thank you. Thank you for your candid response. As part of the inaugural commission, if you're selected. You would be setting kind of the pace for the future. What specific skills, connections, resources or expertise do you possess? That would help to set that path?
Um, well, like I said, I've been around a while. Um, I've been involved in the past with the uh Pasco Chamber. Uh Tri-Cities Chamber. Um, I've had a career, I'm currently employed at Harvey Insurance, so I've been there since two thousand eight. Um, I've been involved and I have connections at the Tri-City Herald, um and various, you know, uh news publications. Um, I can be as involved, that's one of the things that's nice about the job that I do, is that it does give me some flexibility in my scheduling. Um, but at the same time, I'm not necessarily looking for this to replace my day job, so. Um, but again, I am able to kind of find resources and I usually know somebody. That can usually, if I can't get the job done, I usually know somebody that knows somebody and I find, I've. Honestly, ever since I've been around, I've, I've quickly learned that usually the answer you need is two people away.
Ms. Br- Brus.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, quick question. As a member of the commission, you may be disqualified due to conflict of interest from being able to submit proposals for consideration. By the commission if the proposal involves compensation by or through the city. Does this present a problem for you?
I don't think so. So does that mean I can't basically submit for art? Or I don't know what you're saying. So I'm not, I honestly, I sketch in my spare time, but I'm not looking to go and do any proposals for art.
And basically, that's what it is. Like a big project that you're working on.
I got, I got no irons in the fire. I sketch at home in my eas- in my lazy boy.
Thank you, Ms. Brus. Okay, so I, my, my first question is. You've done a world, a pretty good job and I think we've got a pretty good idea what his background is, but just in, in maybe fifteen seconds or twenty seconds. Um, why do you wanna be on this Arts and Culture Commission?
Um, well, like I said, um one of the big uh things that I'd love to see is I'd, I have a couple of. Uh projects that I think would be real assets to the city. Um, that have been rolling in my, around in my head um since probably like nineteen ninety-four. And so I figure if um, if that would be at all possible to. Try and help make some of those things happen, you know, you have to actually, you can't just think about them, you actually have to try and. See if some of those things can actually happen. So, um but um apart from that, anything I can do to help kind of make. Art happen is good, so I figure it's worth at least checking it out.
Alright, well, thank you very much. The last one is that the commission will typically meet monthly and likely for events sponsored by the commission. Do you feel like you have the time for such a commitment?
Yes, if it's monthly and events sponsored. How many events are we talking? Yeah, so he- here's the deal, I go and I volunteer with museum, I'm, I, I volunteer with the East Benton County History Museum. Once a week, that usually takes me every Saturday from twelve to four, that ha- that event has a couple of uh. Of extra events in a month. I'm gonna be involved with the uh Richland uh Uptown Art Walk. Come, uh when it comes online in April, that'll be about once a month. I mean, ultimately, you know, once a month with a couple of extra things is not a big deal. You know, you start adding too many of those, it can be death by a thousand paper cuts. So I mean, you, you know, you just. I'll have to take a look and we'll have to see what the schedule looks like. If it starts being once a month plus. You know, an extra seven or eight things in a month, uh then that will be different, but I think if it's just one meeting. And that meeting doesn't turn into a three-hour slog every time of arguing about. What color the carpet's gonna be in some building, then I think it should probably be okay.
Alright, well, thank you very much. Appreciate you volunteering and wanting to be a part of this. And the council will send me their thoughts and then we'll let you know uh in a week or so, um. Be appointed under the commission.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming down. Next interviewee is Emma Barnes. Hello, Emma Barnes. If you wanna state your name for the record, please?
Yeah, my name is Emma Barnes.
Well, thank you for being here tonight and uh being uh willing to be a part of the community and part of this commission. And I appreciate uh, you know, just your efforts and, and the willingness to come down. So we're gonna ask, uh the council's gonna ask a series of questions. There's no right or wrong questions, you can relax. Um and just um, um after the questions, I'll have a, a one or two other questions for you, and then if you have any questions for us. You can ask us. So with that, Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, and thank you so much for coming out. I really appreciate you uh offering to, to spend some time um helping out the city. So my question for you is, how do you think the community can be best engaged in the public art planning process?
Really easy answer is just listening. Just listen to the community. I mean, they, they need to feel that it's something that uh. Reflects them like what represents them as individuals, but as a community and you can't really just go in and, and. Put something there without their input or right, understanding what the community is about. So I think just involving them, getting their feedback and, and, you know, people from the community.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and uh, Ms. Barnes. Uh, thank you for coming down and welcome to City Hall. Um, my question for you is, uh you know, art can be subjective. And what is pleasing to one may be displeasing to another. There's also a, a artistic expression. And so how would you work with the commission to balance these realities in a way that minimizes unfavorable responses to new public art?
So in my professional experience, um sometimes you just have to decide. What your standard's gonna be, sometimes just agreeing that this is what the standard is and kind of letting some of the subjectivity go by the wayside. Sometimes it's just. Uh you just find a balance between what all the difference opinions are, cause you're never actually gonna get someone who one hundred percent will support, they're like, I love this. Whether it's the color or the concept or the theme or whatever, but just trying to balance the best of what everyone's trying to offer. It's very hard, but it's, it's just compromise, knowing how to compromise.
Good arse, great answer, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mrs. Roach.
Thank you for coming down. Um, how would you um think that youth would be better served in our community? In being engaged in the arts?
Yeah, so um, again, from kind of professional and personal experience, um I grew up in a very rural area and. I know a lot of kids for very different reasons, whatever their background is, you, you know, being in a rural area, but be- being artistically inclined, it feels really isolating and so I felt. That the exposure to the arts and the, the abilities that teachers and other people gave me. Um, you know, is what really encouraged me to get a higher education and, and to kind of get involved in things that I'm doing, but uh. Really, it's, it's a fundamental part of being human and I think kids are just the perfect. For lack of a better term, maybe specimen. I mean, it just feels like it's an innate part of, of youth. To, to have some form of expression, so I think having that available to them and having them be a part of it. It within like the context of their community, I think builds a stronger community. Um, I think that answers question.
That's, that's good. Thank you very much. Mr. Milne.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Emma Barnes for coming down here. We actually have something in common, cause I actually used to live at your house that you used to. That you live in now, so.
What, really? I need to pick your brain, cause we're remodeling and, and there's.
Yeah, please do. Um, but yes, so my question for you is. Uh, can you share uh with us some of the art projects or events you've been involved with in the past? And any takeaways from the success or failure of that project?
Yeah, um. A lot, not, not to brag, but um one of the things is uh, uh. I work at a, um, Art in the Park, or excuse me, Art in the Park Gallery at the Park, who puts on Art in the Parks, it's one of the largest um. Um, art shows in, in this part of uh Pacific Northwest, but definitely this part of Washington. I helped, um, I'm also did, took a very part-time job with the Ruin Mechanicals, it's a local Shakespearean theater group. Um, what are some other things I'm doing? I'm chairing the Richland Creative District, it's a state level endorsement. That we're trying to get for um the, this core part of Richland, uh it's all about like. You know, the creative economy, kind of like how are the arts and then, you know, how does that empower our, our local economy? And then uh the Uptown Art Walk, which it's going into the second year and it was extremely successful. Um, a lot of failures, there's always gonna be a lot of failures. I think a lot of those and maybe hopefully this isn't just like a trite answer, but it's really just communication and then trying to understand. Again, it's all subjective. Um, but it was really just communicating and trying to uh bring the right people to the table. Um, all kinds of people to the table and then really just listening to what their expectations are and what, what, what's the real outcome that you wanna have? And so sometimes artists like to be, not, not to judge all artists, but they could be um. They have very strong opinions and so sometimes it takes someone who's a little bit more of an organizer to kind of balance things out. Um, some of the successes have been, uh at least with the art walk, it's like we just were a group of friends who got together and said. We want this to happen, we don't, we want this to be a barrier-free way for anyone who, whether you're drawing yesterday, you've been doing this for twenty years. You can come and show your art and the most we had was a little over a thousand people in October. Come to the Uptown, which was also great, cause it was in part kind of, um, a lot of people also have businesses in the Uptown who are also wanting their walk, so it was like this great. Way to like bring people into that area when it was usually pretty dead, but then also. Just expose people um to the arts and, and people who maybe don't have another way to. Put themselves out there, they can just come, cause it's for free and it's just a nice community organization. Um, with the Richland Creative District, so far what's been really important is uh ensuring that we are engaging. Everyone in this proposed district, all the constituents, so um you know, ensure that not only were their visual art. Art representatives such as myself and other folks, but also someone who, you know, owns a restaurant, small business owners. Um, because it, it does impact them as well and, and, and somebody. Um, in particular, it's like, you know, they're, they're, they're also part of that creative economy, I mean, they're part of what makes. Um, our quality of life in this area better, but it's, so, so it's good to have those different perspectives and even though. We clash a lot, you still have to listen to each other and, and what, what's, what's the ultimate, what's the greater good we're trying to accomplish here? So that's been really successful, actually.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it and uh, yeah, please reach out to me, I'd, I'd love to see what you've done with the house, so I'd help in any way, good.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Milne, Mr. Serrano.
Thank you. And you kind of dovetailed into my question with Mr. Milne, so. I can give you a pass or however you wanna play this one, but as part of the inaugural commission, you're really setting the pace for the future of the commission. Can you address any other additional set, strengths or skill sets or connections or resources or expertise that you have? To really again, set in motion this commission if you're um selected?
Yeah, I think a lot of the experience is just um kind of connections with the visual artists in this area. Um Gallery at the Park is, is kind of the, the leading gallery, it's the only official permanent gallery that we have and there's been a lot of. Um, uh just the experience of dealing with artists and dealing with shows and productions and that sort of thing, um dealing with some of the more. Some of the more mechanical things of, of the art world. Um, but then also just the, the, the connections and the art, you know, the artistic community and stuff. Being um really immersed in that can bring those things to um Pasco and encourage the ones that are here, we have tons of artists here in Pasco. And, and Pasco has its own, um, you know, vibrant community, it has its own unique history that uh. That really, really deserves a highlight um for sure, but also um. My experience of working with the City of Richland, um to do the Creative District, we do need them. Uh, I g- I guess to make it succinct is that basically the experience of bringing kind of an art program while working with the city and kind of understanding each other's needs and. And again, uh collaborating and um. Yeah, just collaborating with the city, that, that has been a unique experience and so far really successful.
Alright, thank you. Mrs. Serrano, Ms. Brus.
Thank you so much for applying for this position, uh Ms. Barnes. Um, it's a long question, very simple answer. As a member of the commission, you may be disqualified due to the conflict of interest from being able to submit proposals. For consideration by the commission if the proposal involves compensation by or through the city. Does this present a problem or concern?
No. Okay, no, I, I was just really thinking about it, it's like, no.
Alright, well, thank you very much. I have two, two short uh questions for you. The first one is, you, you, we got a pretty good idea with your application and what your background is now, but just give a fifteen to twenty-second summary of. Why uh, of, of a background as it relates to art and why you applied to be on this Arts and Culture Commission?
Yeah, so um, I touched on it a little bit earlier, I said I was, I was from a rural area and Pasco reminds me so much of where I grew up in the Akma Valley. And I feel just my experience with Richland, it's kind of the hub. But I live in Pasco and Pasco is just as cool, Pasco has just as much to offer as anyone else and so. The artists and stuff that I know here just, why, why isn't that happening here? And there's no reason why it shouldn't happen here and we're just as vibrant and we have. There's no reason why we can't have a vibrant art scene here as well, and so I think um when this came available, I just thought. He- here's a great opportunity to bring all these things that I've been working on over here to where I actually live and actually wanna. Well, man, I live here, so I wanna be here, you know, so.
Well, perfect. Well, thank you very much for that. And the commission will typically meet monthly and likely for events sponsored by the commission. Do you feel like you have the time for such a commitment?
Yes.
Perfect. Alright, well, once again, thank you, uh, thank you for coming and being a, a part of this and wanting to be a part of this. The, the council will um give me their, their, their um, their thoughts about your interview and then we'll let you know. If you get selected for the position.
Okay, awesome. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you, thank you for coming. Next would be an art professional, Rebecca Merley Omejé. Hello, Rebecca. You wanna come on up and state your name for the record, please?
My name is Rebecca Merkle Omejé.
Thank you and thank you, uh, welcome to City Hall and thank you for being here and wanting to be a part of this and, and willing to, to, to work for our community. The council will ask a series of questions, there's no right or wrong answer, you can relax. Um, you know, if, if you can give, you know, short brief answers, that'd be the best, but just uh answer them the best you can and um. With that, we'll start with uh, Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you so much for coming down and, and willing, and being willing to volunteer your time for uh, in support of the city. Um, so my question for you is, how do you think the community can be best engaged in the public art planning process?
Well, um, through really clear communication and providing opportunities for community members to. Kind of express support or communicate their own ideas, as well as even respond to, to artists' calls, having open. Um, uh, opportunities for anybody in the community. Um, and then all, as well as maybe like cultural events and uh other, other sorts of activities. Um, opportunities to um engage with a variety of, of art, um, yeah, in public, in public spaces.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Maloney and Mr. Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and uh, thank you for coming down and uh your interest in serving on this board, uh, we're excited about it and uh. Uh, my question uh for you is, art can be subjective and what is pleasing to one may be displeasing to another. And there's artistic expression. So how would you work with the commission to balance these realities in a way that minimizes. Unfavorable responses to new public art?
I think there are kind of some uh regular sorts of nuisances that can be avoided by having really clear guidelines. Um, and just having, again, on a case-by-case basis, being able to evaluate the. The strengths and weaknesses of any kind of given proposal. Um, and, and again, being very clear and open in the communication with the potential artists or other stakeholders.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Alvarado, Mrs. Roach.
Thank you for coming down and for applying. I wanted to ask you, how do you think youth would be better served in our community um by being engaged in the arts?
Well, having uh like after-school activities or even kind of. Well, having uh like after school activities or even kind of um community sort of. Gathering places and things like that where they can engage in their time in constructive ways. And just as as I believe that art is um beneficial to just to make it, to be around it, I believe is. Um is important for kind of human enrichment, um yeah, so I think just having art. In a space can make it more inviting and make it more pleasing for the youth, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Mr. Milne.
Uh thank you, Mayor, thanks so much for being here, we do appreciate it. So my question to you is, can you share with us some of the art projects or events you've been involved with in the past and any takeaways? Be it the success or failure of that project?
For about ten years, I was part of a a team of artists and designers who created large scale public works. We created um Casperon Memorial, Casperons Memorials. Um and large sculpture projects as well as um community murals and other sorts of. Um public installations and community place making projects. So uh there's a lot as far as like uh fundraising and balancing budgets and supervising. Uh safety and and those other types of concerns. And as well as kind of working with uh community leaders and making sure like all of. All of the regulations are being followed, all your your i's are dotted and t's are crossed and it does require a lot of. Organization and again, once again, clear communication with everybody involved um. But uh in that process, I have really seen how um. How efforts to have public art and public engagement in art really um enrich the the. Uh inspire civic pride and uh contribute to the identity of a community. So yeah, those are some of my the most powerful takeaways to me in terms of my my personal experience of making and um. Enabling art to take place in the public.
Okay, well, thank you for your well thought out answer, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Serrano.
Thank you, um you've touched on some of the components of this question already, but uh if you're selected as a member of the inaugural commission. You'll be setting the path forward for the future of the commission, what strengths, skills, connections, resources? Or other expertise that you've already not addressed uh that do you have that you think you could bring to really set that direction?
Uh um I I applied to this commission kind of uh through uh my employment with Columbia Basin College. And so my connections with the academic community and our our student community could be particularly useful, a place to to draw resources from. And I also have a lot of experience dealing with with policy in these roles that I've discussed and I think that's that's very important. Particularly with kind of the starting up new things, we need to have that very clear pathway forward and. I do have experience navigating some of these sorts of systems.
Thank you, well, I have two simple kind of short questions for you. Uh the first one is kind of you we've cut you've kind of explained a lot of things uh about yourself. And the experience you got and with your application, but just in about twenty seconds, tell us. Um a little bit about the background as it relates to art and why you applied for the Arts and Culture Commission?
So I've been I've been an artist my my whole life, I I I have a a master's of fine art um in painting and sculpture. From Idaho State University and I've really dedicated my life to. Uh to the arts, to making art, promoting art, working with artists. Um and I've sort of shifted my practice more towards the kind of curating and administrative side. Um as gallery director, et cetera, um. Sorry, what was that? Why I want to be on the commission, um I I'm relatively new to this community, um I just got here in July and I really. Want to contribute my my skills, I'm definitely very invested and committed to having a meaningful role here.
Alright, well, thank you, and the last one is um the commission will typically meet monthly and likely for events sponsored by the commission. Do you feel like you have the time for such a commitment?
Yes, I do.
Perfect, alright, do you have any questions for? Sorry? Did I skip you, I'm so sorry, Ms. Rothus, go ahead.
I thought we were done. Quick question, a long question, really, very short answer. Um you did mention a little bit about some of the projects that you've been doing, some of the work that you've done. Um as a member of the commission, you may be disqualified due to a conflict of interest from being able to submit a proposal. Or consideration by the commission if the proposal involves compensation by or through the city. Does this present a problem or concern?
No, and I would definitely not want to engage in any sort of activity that would create a conflict of interest, I would not submit anything to. Um the city that I would then be responsible for voting on, absolutely not, and not even within, you know, a certain amount of years of. Being on the rotation on the committee, I would not wanna bias that in any way either to toward or against anybody, really.
Thank you, thank you for your answer.
Thank you, and I'm so sorry again, uh so with that said, do you have any questions for us?
What does an an Arts and Culture Commission mean to to you all, like why why do you want to have one?
Well, I don't know if anybody wants to take a crack at that, could I go ahead, Mr. Alvarado?
Well, I'll say in the words of one of the uh persons who uh interviewed, I think making art happen. Um and so I think that that's something that uh our community can really uh benefit from uh um. Being able to uh tap into all the resources that we have in our community, especially those who are. Uh unique and have something to express that perhaps would express things that other but other of us can't, um so yeah.
And you're.
And just real quick, all that to that, I my personal opinion is that art is an unspoken language. I believe it uh connects communities, especially in the tri cities are three different demographics. Um um it could be a bridge to all three communities, that's what I personally believe, adding to Mr. Alvarado's.
I wanna answer this question too, I feel like it really personally enriches my life and it does so for others too, it brings them joy or brings them solace. Depending on what it is that they're experiencing in their life and I think that Pasco does have a lot of artists in Mid-Columbia. And so it is an area where we have a need to provide space for artists, um and so I want that to be in Pasco.
Okay, so that you know, so we're passionate about it and we're not just setting this up just to set it up. Uh it's a vital part of enriching the the community and 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 making it beautiful and and it just brings life. And everywhere we go, right, so that's what it means to us, but anyway, thank you, uh there was uh council will share with me their thoughts and then we'll. Contact you if we get selected to be on the commission.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming. Alright, next um. We have an uh another art professional, Nisha McSwain Franco. Come on up, Nisha. And if you come on up and name your uh uh give your name for the record, please?
Hello, my name is Nisha McSwain Franco.
And thank you for being here and welcome to City Hall, we we really wanna thank you for coming and and being uh willing to volunteer and be a part of our community. And be a part of this commission, so what's gonna happen here today is we'll ask you a series of questions that council will. And it can be uh you know, don't be nervous, there's no right or wrong answer, you can answer uh just answer to the best of your ability and. We'll start with Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you so much for coming down and and being willing to volunteer your time for us. So my my question is, how do you think the community can be best engaged in the public art planning process?
Uh I think just with simple awareness, I know when I worked with um the Community Hope Wall Project. That a lot of the community was like, oh, we would have helped, we would have donated, we would have, you know, tried to provide or showed up if we had more. Um information about it and it even though we were on Facebook and everything else and doing. Media interviews, um I feel like if we had done more specific outreach to the community of Pasco that. Um a lot more people would have been involved and more enthused with the project.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and uh welcome uh to City Hall, I was uh very uh excited to see so many candidates come and. Be excited about joining our uh uh Arts Commission and so I have a quick question for you and um. Well, it's kind of a long question, but it's, you know, uh so art can be subjective, right? And what is pleasing to one may be displeasing to someone else, uh there's uh artistic expression. So how would you um how would you work with the commission to balance these realities in a way that minimizes. Unfavorable responses to new public art?
Again, I think it's more of an issue of having the community informed and. A part of the art and if they understand the motive and the. Sentiment of the artwork that's proposed, they're less likely to be um opposed to it overall.
Thank you, alright, thank you, Ms. Alvarado, Ms. Roach.
Good evening, I heard you say that you were part of the uh Community Hope Wall uh effort and. I just wanna say thank you for that, that's a beautiful piece of artwork that we have, um and heard a lot from feedback from community that they love it. Uh and my question is related to that because I believe that is a piece of art that was done by youth. Um how would youth be better served uh in our community by engagement in the arts?
Um well, from another product that I work with, I volunteer at the Ben Franklin Juvenile Justice Center working. With students and creating artwork and creating art public uh writing projects, we actually published a book with them. And a lot of the kids expressed um not just joy, but. A new sense of self in arts and in finding a way to express themselves. In a a positive way and a lot of them expressed the sentiment of if we had more of this outside. Of the detention center in our communities, then I would have been less likely to make the poor decisions that landed me here. So I feel like it's very important that the youth are involved, that we provide um opportunities, classes. Um workshops, et cetera, um not just for the youth, but for the community because it'll benefit everyone.
Thank you so much.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Milne.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and uh thank you, Nisha, for being here, um I actually do really like the Hope Wall, it's really cool when you're. I'm walking to Vinnie's and uh get to look at that, so maybe you've kind of already answered the question, but I'll throw it out there anyway, uh can you share with us some of the art projects? And events you've been involved with and any takeaways from the success or failure of that project?
Uh let's see, um I've already mentioned that I volunteer with Hope Builders, the Juvenile Justice Center, um doing. Artwork and with the kids there and and that project is a lot of community involvement. Bringing in volunteers, bringing in artists to work with the kids. Um and I've already expressed my successes with that and um just to share a little bit of. The um. Of what I perceive as like a a failure in that regard is that um. Just getting more community involvement overall um would help not just. With my art projects with the detention center, but with the Hope Wall with um. I wasn't involved with the organization of like the local writers conference, Rivers Inc. But um just seeing how everything was run, there was just a lack of. Community involvement all around that I wish to um rectify and help uh build upon.
Okay, well, thank you, I appreciate your very honest answer, thank you, means a lot to us, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Serrano.
Yeah, um you've already touched on this one again, but uh as part of the inaugural commission. You're going to help establish the future of what the commission does, uh can you touch on any skills or strengths or. Connections or anything else you'd like to add to how you will help set that direction if you're selected?
Um well, I do have, you know, my work with the Hope Wall, which involves working. With you all with getting permits and with finding artists and getting art approved and. Answering and addressing concerns with the artwork and the final products. Um and and the future, I really hope to try to streamline that process for projects in the future. Um be that with recommendations on policy or just on community outreach and. Providing like a voice for those who might not be as comfortable. Being in front of you guys here today, like I.
Thank you, Ms. Rothus.
Thank you so much for being here, Nisha, uh I do need to disclose that Nisha and I worked together in the. Hope Wall project and so my question here is totally unbiased and it comes back to the mayor selecting. Um so best of luck to you, but thank you again for all the community work that you've been doing and especially working with the kids at the Detention Center. Uh long question, very short answer, as a member of the commission, you may be disqualified due to conflict of interest from being able to submit proposals. For consideration by the commission if the proposal involves compensation by or through the city. Does this present a problem or concern?
No.
Thank you, thank you again for applying.
Alright, well, thank you, Nisha, I have two quick questions for you and we've kind of uh got with your application and a little bit with you the described to us already, but. Just tell us in about twenty seconds, a little bit of your background as it relates to art and why you applied for this Arts and Culture Commission?
Um well, I am an author of paranormal romance and I do a lot of work. Um with my publishing company in promoting diversity in romantic literature. Uh specifically in sci-fi paranormal and fantasy genres. Um and I also do like YouTube reviews. I'm very active on social media. And like I said, I love. Being the voice as well as providing space for uh voices like mine to be heard and. To be represented.
Alright, well, thank you, and one last thing, the commission will typically meet monthly and likely for events sponsored by the commission, do you feel? You have uh the time for such a commitment?
Yes.
Perfect, do you have any questions for, do you have any questions for us?
Um not at this time.
Alright, well, uh the the council will give us uh give me their thoughts and then we will give you a call for you if you get selected to be on the commission. Alright, thank you for your time, well, well, quick, before you get to next, I just wanna ask Mr. Ferguson a question just to make sure I'm not misspeaking. Um this is not a quasi judicial, uh if there's people that uh that we've worked with in the past that we're interviewing, there's there's nothing against. This type of uh I mean for for us to interview them or.
No, not in any way, nope, you should be fine.
Okay, just wanna make sure, um because it's not something we even have to disclose at this point.
No, you don't, uh it it helps obviously with transparency and whatnot, but yeah, there's no uh. Um you're selecting the person, obviously you as the mayor are the one who are selecting, so uh yeah, I believe it's it's all good.
Make sure.
No, I appreciate it.
Thank you, next one, please. Next one is uh Callum May Kubalik. And she's a youth representative. Callum May, how you doing today? Come on up to the podium and state your name for the record, please?
My name is Callie Makeabolic.
Oh, well, thank you for coming, I think I said that. And thank you for coming here and wanted to be a part of this, we're really excited about having the youth participate in everything we do. And we just uh appreciate you being here and willingness to yeah stand in front of the council here to answer some questions. And what will happen here is that each one of us will come out uh and ask you a question, they don't be nervous, there's no right or wrong answer, just uh. Feel free to a answer and short answers if you want, however you feel comfortable, so with that said, uh we'll start with Mr. Maloney.
Cool.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you and thank you for coming down and applying for this and uh you know, um. Spending a little bit of time with you right at the Fourth of July celebration. Say before you saying was uh was absolutely wonderful and uh and again, great job on that.
Thank you.
Um so my question is, um. How do you think the community can be best engaged in the public art planning process?
Public art planning process?
Yes.
How can they be involved?
Yes.
Well, I mean, you you could ask them, we could do online surveys or um in planning, okay, that's an interesting question. Um. Yeah, I mean, if we just reach out to the community and ask them for ideas on how they want to share and express art, then um. Then the commission can then take that and try to make it happen.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for uh coming.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for uh coming down and your interest in this commission. Um I'm excited to see uh youth uh being involved in this and so we were uh very excited to make that make that a part of this commission, so my question to you is, you know, art can be pretty subjective and what's pleasing to one person can be displeasing to another person. Right, and so there's that artistic expression, so the question is how would you work with the commission to balance these realities in a way that may uh minimizes unfavorable results to new public art?
Well, I think that um just having this broad scope of different people on the commission I think that alone will just get a um wide variety of perspectives. And that way like uh we can like try to minimize any um, what's the word I'm looking for? I I'm drawing a blank on what I'm looking for, but um debate or just tension between the art that we put out. But um I think that everyone on the commission has good intentions and I think the community will recognize that as well, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mrs. Roach.
Thank you for coming down tonight and applying. Um my question was, how do you think that youth would be better served in this community if they were engaged in the arts?
The arts are a very powerful thing and I think that they give opportunities for a deeper level of human communication and connection than really anything else. So providing inexpensive and available opportunities for youth to be involved in that can really make a huge impact on how they just grow as people and can be an outlet for stress relief or for a feeling of community that they might lack in other places. Being a part of the arts my whole life, it's definitely helped me to connect with people that I never would have in any other situation and grow as a person and learn from other people. So it's, if we can make that more available to the community, I think that that's very important.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Millen.
Thank you, Mayor, and uh it's been a pleasure knowing your dad, I really enjoy my time getting to know him and I really appreciate that you're willing to also try to make Pasco a better place, that that means a lot to us. So my question to you is, uh can you share with us some of the art projects that you've done in school or or different events that you've been involved with and any of the takeaways from that, such as like a success or failure?
Absolutely, um well, I've been interested in the arts my whole life, I've done a large majority of the art I've done is in theater, doing musicals and plays, I also participate in band and choir. And some successes, I've been able to play significant roles in multiple different plays, which has been huge for me to grow as an artist. Um some failures, uh I've competed theatrically and not done well. And that's that's been an opportunity for me to learn and to also recognize how subjective art is and that um beauty is in the eye of the beholder.
Well, thank you, thanks for your well thought out answer, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Toronto.
Thank you, and thank you for coming down. Um so if you're selected, you'll be a part of the inaugural commission and with that, you're gonna help establish the future of the commission, can you speak to any additional skills, resources or connections that you might have that could really help position you to push the commission?
Well, I've um like I said, I've been doing arts the whole li- my whole life. Um did it in middle school, I'm, you know, a I'm constantly working with them in my school, I've done art around the community with community troops and things. Um so if we can um provide opportunities for these different groups to come together and share their art I think that could be a big um booster to get this commission up and running and uh maybe just like a good first goal for them.
Thank you, and Ms. Barajas?
There's, that was like the perfect answer right there, it's good to see you again, uh we met at the Sir Optimist. Last year, um long question for you, very short answer. Um as a member of the commission, you may be disqualified due to conflict of interest from being able to submit proposals for consideration by the commission if the proposal involves compensation by or through this city. Does this present a problem or concern?
Can you state that in high schooler language?
Do you plan on creating a piece of art or some sort of art that you would like for the commission to uh submit for approval, that way you can get compensated for it? Thank you.
That's a good answer, so thank you very much and thank you again for uh wanting to participate, I have uh two little two little questions, one of them, uh you've kind of already talked a little bit about your background in theater but uh as it relates to art, but uh tell us why a little bit why you applied to be on this commission?
Well, for one, like I said, there's not very many opportunities for young kids in Pasco to to be a part of art, like I said, I've done things around the community, but a lot of them are very expensive and time consuming. If we can create places for children to come that are inexpensive, even if it's really simple um I think that's very beneficial and I wanna make that possible for younger kids so that they can grow up with those opportunities, so.
Perfect, thank you, now the commission will typically meet monthly and likely for events sponsored by the commission? Do you feel like you have the time? Perfect, well, with that said, we appreciate you uh your willingness to come here again and speaking in front of a council, I know can't be that easy, uh but you made it look easy, so you did a very good job. Uh so what'll happen is that those share with me their thoughts and then we'll let you know if you get selected for the committee.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. Alright, I don't know, one last one is Ellie Neff. Hello, Ellie. Please come to the podium and state your name for the record, please.
Eleanor Paige Neff.
Uh Ellie, good to see you here tonight and thank you for coming and uh willing uh be willing to to participate and be a part of our community. Uh what will happen here today is each one of the members will ask you a question, there's no right or wrong answer, just be relaxed, I know uh you you relaxed anyway, I I know Ellie from way back. Uh so anyway, thank you for coming once again, and with that, Mr. Maloney.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you so much for coming and and being willing to uh to serve our community in this way. It really does mean a lot to have the community step up and say, I wanna be part of part of the city. So um my question for you is, how do you think the community can be best engaged in the public art planning process?
Um I think that we should find local artists that represent the diversity of our community and uh find a way to support them in more than just murals, find people interested in dance and poetry and uh a di- more diverse look at the art in our community.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alvarado.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, and thank you for coming down and uh showing interest in this co- uh in this committee, we're very excited about it and now we're excited that you are are here. Um my question for you, uh it's I'll start with a statement and then I'll go into the questions, so statement is, art can be subjective and what is pleasing to one may be displeasing to another because there's a art artistic expression, right? Uh so the question is, how would you work with the commission to balance these realities in a way that minimizes unfavorable responses uh to new public art?
Um I think that having a diverse commit- commi- art commission helps because you can get multiple perspectives. Um and then I think that just asking questions of the community and seeing what they want and then finding things that match up with that is the best way to go about that.
Great answer, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for applying and thank you for coming down, so what I wanted to ask you was, how do you think that youth in our community could be better served by being engaged in the arts?
I think the arts is a really good way to involve the youth because we live in a time where everything is so visual, thanks to social media. Um so I think that if we find, if we can find a way to bridge the gap in community to the youth, art is the best way to go about that. Um and asking questions of CBC or Pasco or Chiwona High and seeing what they wanna see and that I think is the best way to involve the youth and get them involved more into the community.
Thank you, Mr. Millen.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you Eleanor for being down here, we do appreciate it. So my question to you is, can you share with us some of the art projects or events that you have been involved with in the past and some of the maybe takeaways, success, values, that sort of stuff?
Um yeah, I, my senior year of high school, we had to write a thesis, I wrote on why art is important to education. Um through that process, I learned a lot about how art is used to show our history and I think that Pasco has such a diverse history that that is a really good way to represent us and to show a reflection of who we are to other people. Um I haven't been involved in a lot of community art projects. Um I, most of my community service has been through the Franklin County Historical Society. Um but I think that we need to be supporters of art because that is what is most often shown through history to show what a community was like.
Well, thank you, I like the answer, thanks.
This, thank you, Mr. Toronto.
Thank you, and thank you for coming down here. Um so if you're selected, you'll be part of the inaugural commission, meaning you're setting kind of the forward looking direction of this commission. Um what other skills, connections, resources that you've not already mentioned do you have that you think would really help jettison this commission?
Um I am a current student at CBC, so I think that kind of having um an ear to the ground on what's going on with our young, our youth on college campus would be good. I am the administrative assistant at the Pasco Chamber of Commerce, so I see and meet a lot of small and local business owners. And I think that it's important to involve them in what we do um as a city and as on the art commission.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Well, thank you, Ms. Barajas.
And one of the last questions. As a member of the commission, you may be disqualified due to conflict of interest from being able to submit proposals for consideration by the commission if the proposal involves compensation by or through the city. Does this present a problem or concern?
Yeah, that's a great answer, so Ellie, um you've kind of uh very well uh creatively or you you've explained yourself very well, um but tell us in about twenty seconds um how what your background is as it relates to art and why you applied to be on this commission?
Can you repeat that?
So what is your background as it relates to art and why you applied for the Arts and Culture Commission?
Like I said, um a big, I I'm a huge supporter of art, I'm not an artist myself, I don't have that much skill but I enjoy seeing it and I enjoy seeing what the reflection of a community can be through their art. Um I think that we need to be better about supporting creatives in uh in the community where and we put so much focus on uh math and science because we're so close to Hanford. But I think that it's good to have an a creative take on that and we need to be supportive of creatives and idea people. Um so that is why I applied, I want to show an example of that.
Perfect, thank you, so the commission will typically meet monthly and likely for events sponsored by the commission. Do you feel like you have the time for such a commitment? Perfect, do you have any questions for us?
I don't.
Well, that's wonderful, well, thank you once again, uh the council will uh provide their thoughts to me and then we will call you and let you know if you're selected.
Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you for coming and being a part of this, thank you, Ellie. I'm very impressed with this, with the two youth, they did a great job, okay. So with that, that was the last, I will uh be uh happy to have you share your thoughts with me and uh we'll be making a selection, uh is it for next week? Next week, we'll be making a a selection and we'll be appointing the people for this commission, this, by the way, this is gonna be the the one that we had the most interviews for, uh we will have a series of interviews that will be coming in for the different committees. Um but it'll only be two or three people at the most, so and I will be asking uh I appreciate Mr. Maloney and Mr. Millen for coming in last week and helping us go through these applications and I'll be probably asking others to to come in every once in a while to help me uh select applications for the other committees as well, alright? Well, thank you for that, do you guys wanna take a five minute recess? Uh why don't we take a five minute recess before we uh get into the next uh the next item in our agenda and uh we'll reconvene at uh what would you say, seven thirty? Alright, thank you. And thank you. Thank you. If I can catch everybody's attention, I'd like to reconvene the meeting. Next on the uh, workshop agenda, we have a presentation uh, from. From Rita, uh, on uh, doing business with the city. What do you have to tell us tonight about that, Rita?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, this is more of an informational uh, presentation for you. Uh, but also hopefully to um, our um, residents in Pasco and also all of the other. Viewers online and um, on YouTube and all of the videos that uh, John usually saves out there. Uh, for people to watch. And um, essentially this is an update on a program that council had approved, which started. In two thousand fifteen um, by uh, hiring a contract specialist position within Public Works Department. Uh, and then council again established a procurement specialist position. Uh, within um, the finance department in two thousand eighteen as well. With these two positions, we've been able to create a, a pretty robust contracting and procurement pro- program within the city. And some of the things that um, these two staff members have done. Um, are essentially streamlining our contracts management process. Um, they have assisted city staff in RFQ and RFP process. And they have not just become subject matter expert in this area, but also taken a load of, lot of load off of our other staff members. Um, so that has been really valuable. Uh, and also have assisted in overhauling the city's procurement policy. The last procurement policy was uh, written back in nineteen eighty-five. And a lot of things had changed since then, so they've done a great job uh, at that. And also implemented a procurement system uh, for the city as well, uh, with our financial system. In that process, they've also guided numerous vendors and contractors and consultants. Um, through some of the processes that the city has, making it easier for them to do business with the city. However, we do recognize that um, as we're really working on um. Making our internal processes better, we also need to be external focused because we do. Uh, work with a lot of businesses, uh, local businesses, state uh, wide businesses, but also national vendors and contractors. As well that we need to do few things. Uh, to get them more educated, especially our local vendors or local businesses, I would say. Because they do not have the same bandwidth as some of the national or uh, statewide uh, businesses might. Um, so our goal is um, for uh, the future to keep assisting the city and other staff members to. Meet all of the regulatory uh, contracting and procurement requirements, and there are many. And they're ever changing, so it's uh, it's a difficult field. Uh, but also create a business engagement plan. Uh, that will be focused on engaging with uh, businesses, but more specifically, local businesses um, as well. Uh, and in that process, uh, make it easier for them to do business with the city. Uh, and uh, some of the things, and this is not an all inclusive list. Is to work on our internal process improvements, so we're removing barriers where there need not to be one. Uh, and uh, better communication and guidance, uh, provide, utilize our website and really, really leverage that. To get information out, uh, create forms so they don't have to call or email or, or send a letter if they don't need to. Uh, and also streamlining our RFQ and RFP processes wherever possible. Uh, and um, more importantly, training, um, and council member Maloney uh, reminded me. There is uh, there are a lot of partners. Uh, that we have like Tri-Cities Chamber of Commerce who provide really good training for people who want to do business with local government or. Or any kind of government. And uh, we are going to partner with those partners. And um, see what training opportunities there are currently existing. So that we can guide our businesses uh, to those partners. Uh, but also see if there's something that we can create in-house. Uh, that will be uh, beneficial to the businesses uh, that we do business with. So for right now, what exists is our website, which is bids, uh, we have our bids and requests for proposals. That are post, posted on our website. And um, this is an example, this, I created this presentation a, a little bit. Uh, maybe a month ago, so some of the projects have closed, but these are some of the schedules of the city's project. Uh, projects and something that our businesses should be aware of, uh, first to. Uh, bid on the projects, but also to kind of see what's coming up and what the city is working on and what opportunities might be available to them.
Ms. Signal.
Yes.
Can you explain what a sealed bid is?
Uh, that would be, uh, I will look at Mr. Worley here. A lot of the sealed bids are happening through Public Works Department.
Yes, typically on a sealed bid, all bidders are required to put the bid package, all of their numbers relative and all the forms that we ask them to fill out. They literally put them inside an envelope and seal it. And then they give it to the city clerk and then we open those sealed bids at, after the deadline of that. There are bids that are not sealed, so like when we receive bids over the phone or when we do small works bids, we can sometimes receive those bids. That are not sealed. So there is that distinction as to when we require a sealed bid versus not.
Thank you.
Good question. Thank you. Mr. Serrano.
Um, this is probably half for you, half for Mr. Ferguson and more of a thought out loud. Um, we seem to have a Facebook page that has a reasonable amount of followers as we advertise these things. Certainly, we couldn't advertise in the true sense, I suspect, but we could, I believe, post these. Pending rosters or bids on Facebook. I don't know if that might help increase the local pools. And again, I don't know, I haven't researched this and just kind of came to me as, as we were talking through. But if traffic's part of the issue, maybe putting it on other public domains where the city has already pre-generated traffic would be. A free valuable resource to generate additional interest.
We, we do have um, uh, requirements by state law as to where we have to advertise. But certainly those, those are, that's a great idea and a good option. I, I can't say that we're doing that now. And uh, when they pick up a bid package, it'll have everything that that advertisement refers to, so. While, while the um, a press release or a social media post might be a little less formal. Uh, the packages that they would get by going through the process contacting us would be the same thing. They would by contacting us by coming to the office, just because they're writing the paper, so.
Right, my thought would be to, to link it to this other page that might be low, what, lower traffic volume. Anyway. Just thinking of, of ways again to generate in particular local interest where we can.
That is a great idea and I have taken note and something that we will work on. Uh, additionally, one of the things that we've found as we've worked with our local businesses. Uh, and this is more of relative, but we've found that there's a lot of more. Um, businesses from West Side who are part of the MRSC rosters. And what MRSC rosters are, uh, are essentially businesses who are interested in receiving. Uh, notifications for current business opportunities. There's also requirements where. The city for small works projects, for example, can just go to the roster and contact. The businesses there, so it does increase your vi- visibility, but also the, it, it increases the ease for a city to do business with you. Um, so we've been working with our businesses here locally to ensure that they are part of this roster so that we can easily do. Uh, business with them as well. MRSC does manage the rosters for us, including many other cities and counties. Uh, they have three specific rosters, uh, small works, vendor and consultant. And small works roster is for any um, small public works project. Uh, that is an estimated cost of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars or less. Uh, we're used to thinking of public works as a department. However, public works project is defined in Revised Code of Washington. Uh, as something that is all construction, alteration, repair or improvement. Uh, other than ordinary maintenance. So even though administrative and community services department kind of managed the city hall remodel. Uh, that is still a public works project, not a small one, because it was much more than three hundred and fifty thousand, but um, so. Uh, thinking about public works projects in a definition sense, uh, is essentially construction. Or repair. The vendor rosters are for any uh, goods and services, but mostly goods, um, uh, estimated cost of fifty thousand or more. And so if we have local businesses who are in the vendor rosters, it really uh, decreases their barriers for doing business with us. And consultant roster, exact same thing, um, just uh, definition of, of what exactly those services are. And they're all defined by uh, RCWs. Additionally, and this is a little bit higher barrier for especially smaller businesses, but. You can also be uh, a, a bidder or a winner of Washington State contract, which will open up your business for. Um, for the whole Washington state. Uh, and what uh, the city can do is essentially look at who has the Washington State contract. And essentially do business with that person with very little uh, red tra- red tape or a lot of steps. Uh, because these are usually um, the lowest cost uh, options for the city. The other option, and we do utilize this quite a bit. Uh, is that we will go to our local vendors and see if they can match it. And that's a, that's something that we do on a very regular basis because we want to give business to our local vendors. Uh, but if they were to look to expand their market, then this would be an avenue to go to. Washington State also has a really good website on how to do business with, with the state. And that is something that we are uh, looking at to see how we can replicate that. Uh, because it has a lot of really good uh, resources, um, and also good training, uh, things like that. Of course, there's uh, reasons why some of the smaller businesses or lo- or private businesses might not want to do business with the. Government overall, uh, and a large part of that is um, uh, the bureaucracy or, you know, a lot of, lot of steps. And uh, prevailing wages is, is one of them. Sometimes we have a hard time getting. Uh, businesses in um, and bid for our work because they do not want to deal with. Some of the requirements that they feel are more cumbersome. And so. Our goal is to help them understand it if this is something that, you know, they don't understand. And he- hence it feels more daunting, um, so our goal is to train them more on it and if they're still not interested, great, but maybe we can get. Uh, some of our uh, local businesses to bid on um, some of our public works projects. That is all I have and my hope is in the next two years, I can come back to you and. And show you uh, some of the things that we've done um, in the next two years, which is mostly going to be external focused.
Wonderful. Any questions from the council, Mr. Serrano?
Thank you. And, and I know you mentioned the, the various chambers of commerce. I'm just curious if it'd be worth. Hosting like a Pasco-centric contracting with the city of Pasco at City Hall or one of the other venues. I don't wanna put extra burden on you, but um, I wonder if that might draw other bidders specifically from this town.
Absolutely. Some of the cities have done uh, pre-bidding meetings and things like that, but we're trying to. Capture a larger audience so that they can, they can actually be at that pre.
Right.
Bidding meetings.
It's like a pre-pre meeting.
Pre-pre meeting, that is correct.
I'm just trying to think of ways to advertise this because it, like you said, it's, at this point, it's an educational process. And letting, in particular, where possible, our local vendors know, hey, we're interested in business, so, I don't know, just some thoughts.
Great idea.
And I would, I, I know you, you know, be, I would definitely um, encourage that sooner than later, being that. The warm, you know, the, the, the contracting season is coming up. Uh, definitely worth giving it a shot, you know, uh, many times over the years, we see. The same contractors bidding over and over again because they're already established. But if we encourage, can encourage these small businesses and, and local businesses. To uh, to just get it done and, and you know, be able to work through these. Um, these issues that, or these extra s- steps that we have to take for working for a government agency. Uh, I would definitely encourage that and I appreciate you bringing the, this up with this timely manner. Thank you very much. Mr. Alvarado.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I really appreciate this presentation. This is uh, certainly something that we need to become more and more abreast of and so, you know. Uh, I certainly love seeing these presentations come, come by. Um. And so I uh, w- well, the first thing, I, I guess more of a comment is, uh, I, I, I do, I, I do see the value in having a contract specialist and a procurement specialist in-house. I've uh, was doing some research uh, re- recently in, but a specific city that, uh, I guess because they were so, so large, they decided to. Have uh, contractors do the uh, the contract management and things like that and. Uh, many, many uh, issues where that kind of blows up because they do not have great policies, so they don't have great practices. And so I guess uh, that to go into my question is uh, do we have a, what kind of safeguards do we have in place for our um, our contract specialists and folks like that? Uh, to uh, ensure that we are above, above reproach when it comes to how we put out bids and things of that nature?
We have a lot of subject matter experts, I would say, uh, even within the contract um, specialist area. Uh, we have our public works director who has done a lot of projects and has a very good idea on. Um, on when things are not quite right. Uh, but we also send our uh, staff for training, uh, for all appropriate training and thankfully, we have. A lot of local training. We have MRSC or AWC or APWA. Uh, where we can, I just threw out a lot of a- acronyms there. Um, MRSC is the Municipal Research and Services Center. And uh, AWC is Association of Washington Cities. And APWA is Association of Public Works.
American Public Works.
Okay, thank you. Uh, it shows how long I've been in local government when I just. Said it and I didn't even think about it. Uh, so we have a lot of uh, resources, these organizations that are very. Interested in making sure that we do things right and they provide uh, a lot of training for our staff. We have at least. One yearly training that comes to Kennewick each year just to talk about procurements. And contracting, so we make sure that all of our staffs attend those as well.
I will add, I will add also that uh, the state auditor puts a lot of focus on our bidding processes when they do our annual audits, so.
That's kind of more what I was fishing for as well, so thank you. Thank you for both. I think uh, having, having that training has set us up for success. And then having uh, that, you know, set of eyes uh, from an external uh, perspective also helps, so, so I, I, I thank you for that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Alright, well, thank you, Rita. Uh, we'll move on to the next item, which is. Uh, PMC amendments based on code publishing recommendations. Uh, you wanna start this off, Dave, or you want, Mr. Ferguson?
Yeah, I can go ahead. Uh, so this is our uh, second attempt at our second ordinance uh, update. Uh, so uh, uh, we had some questions last time about uh, kind of how we came up with some of the numbers with regard to the PMC amounts, uh. Or the uh, soil infraction amounts in the PMC. And so, uh, we wanted to uh, come back with a little more data and then also uh. Uh, let you know that uh, we still have some questions related to some of this. It's, it's uh, been something that, uh, as you start to pull on it, it starts to. Create more and more questions, so we have most of them answered, uh, but I think we can uh, uh, get it a little more narrowed tonight and, and uh, start getting this towards getting past council. Uh, the, the, the first thing I do wanna kind of remind everybody is that these are, uh, in fact substantive changes. These are not uh, editorial changes that can be handled through scribner's error or other. Um, kind of remedial things that we are, have available to us, so that's why they have to come back uh, in front of council. Uh, the, uh, let's see, the, I, I think you could see, you know, as kind of the second time around, you could see that uh, one of the. Uh, questions we had last time was how often are these enforced? Uh, and you can tell from our uh, uh, staggering statistics that there have been seven uh, infractions and uh, issued over the last three years. So um, uh, we were able to get a little more data on each of those. Um, uh, which we'll talk about in, in just a second, but uh, I, I think the main reason why these are not. Highly uh, enforced or regulated is because um, these are specific to parks. These, this is part of the park code. Uh, so some of these uh, other things, uh, or some of these can be handled in other ways. We have other areas of our code and um. Some, we don't have any other really correlation, but uh, you know, for example, skateboarding, there's, the, this deals with skateboarding in a park. We have other. Uh, infractions that deal with those types of activities uh, on a city street or sidewalk or, or whatnot. So. There are other um, uh, ways that these particular kind of violations are enforced in the city. This is just really specifically related to parks. So that's why we see not a very uh, uh, very high uh, rate of uh, issuance on those tickets. Uh, so that's a little bit of that. And then I think uh, the other thing I really wanted to kind of impress on folks is uh, kind of why we need to do this. Uh, we have in uh, PMC one oh five. Um, we have uh, one oh five, uh, oh eight oh, we have classes for infractions. classes for infractions uh listed in our code. Uh this particular portion of our code just referred to infractions generally. So it wasn't quite clear how that uh was fitting, um which led to a lot of research on our part. And one of the things that we really discovered was, well, where are these infraction amounts for for even these seven that were issued? Where did those come from? Uh and uh so in in working with the courts, I think we were able to find uh that these uh fine amounts are listed in sector, which is our uh, I'll let Mr. Roski explain more about that if he'd like, but uh essentially, the uh these are plugged into the system so that the officers, uh when they plug in the infraction, the fine amount automatically uh comes up uh uh as I understand it. I don't wanna talk out of school. But essentially, what it comes out to is um these are related to some state penalties in what we call the uh infraction rules for courts of limited jurisdiction. There's a there's a whole schedule, and so we've been relying on that in our code, so we have this we have this kind of disconnect between relying on this one system and then saying that we uh have a class system for infractions. So that's really the goal, is to get these two systems to kind of come together and and um uh figure out how to properly uh make sure they can comply with the code, so. That's where we came with the amounts, but again, I wanna press upon everybody that these are just amounts that uh uh we have come up with through looking at other people's codes. I think one of the things that we were a little shocked about is um how mild these appear to be compared to what some of the other folks are doing with these. Uh there was a lot of misdemeanors, a lot of gross misdemeanors. Um uh that for a lot of the same things that we're calling classes of infractions. So yeah, happy to chat about any more questions if you have.
Any questions or comments, Mr. Maloney? Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. Toronto was first.
Sure, two quick questions. Um do we need a definition for beast of burden? I I certainly don't know, other than like as a lyrics to the song, what that is, and I'm not certain that's on par. I mean, that's somewhat said tongue in cheek, but I I feel unless someone's riding a horse through the park, if they're riding some other large animal, it'd be somewhat of an arbitrary citation. So I'm just curious if we need to, I was looking for the definition, just curious if we need that. Don't need an answer now. The one I'm more concerned about is nine point one hundred two forty overnight camping and how the Ninth Circuit's ruling um in the city of Boise case is going to impact our ability to enforce that. And whether or not that's a separate type of camping, uh I know the intent is somewhat different. Um but how do we survive scrutiny there? And and whether that answer is tonight or later, that's fine. Um I am a little concerned about.
Sure, no, absolutely. I think I can give you a a kind of a thumbnail sketch on that. Uh with regard to Martin B. Boise, which is the the latest uh case that uh that came out of the Ninth Circuit, that then was uh subsequently rejected by the US Supreme Court uh based on the fact that it was, uh they felt it was moot. Um uh essentially, what it comes down to is the main holding of that case is that cities, especially in the, obviously in the Ninth Circuit, which we are in, uh cannot outright ban the ability for people to sleep uh in public uh within city limits. So um essentially, what it means that you need to be able to, if you're going to cite someone criminally uh for uh sleeping outdoors, uh you have to have some other alternative for them. So you can do that in a couple of different ways. You can do that by having uh being able to prove that you have bed space available for those folks. Or you can um just uh essentially what most folks are saying is that you can't sleep in certain areas. We fall into the latter category. Uh we don't have an outright ban. We have areas of the city where folks are not allowed to sleep outdoors in the public rights way. Uh parks would be included in that, so we wouldn't uh, I I don't think we would run afoul of Boise with this. Uh but this is uh, this is all new territory, so um yeah, th- there is a question there.
So I guess to to respond, I'm curious if defining camping might prove beneficial and I I, you know, again, it, like you said, it's a novel area.
No, that is a, that's a huge distinction, because sleeping is is uh uh is a much different uh activity than camping. So which can involve sleeping, obviously.
So maybe if the, if we provide that definition, it'd provide a distinction of the two and lend us some more credibility. Again, like you said, novel area, we'll see where it goes, but let's uh let's make sure we don't hurt harm ourselves, right?
Absolutely.
Mr. Toronto, Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, you know, ob- obviously I echo uh Mr. Toronto's uh um comment there and concern, I um independently brought up the same point, so I I appreciate that, uh Mr. Toronto saw the same potential um challenge there. Um and I just wanna make sure that we are, we are, we're on the good side. I don't wanna be sued over this. That's not where this city needs to be right now. Um so my question, actually, um maybe uh Chief Roski can help me out with this one. Um so I I imagine part of the reason why we have so few violations is because a lot of these infractions are um typically used as a threat to end the behavior as opposed to as a mechanism for citation. Um and we probably only take it when it's especially egregious. Uh does this, is that, does that match the uh the um police department's philosophy on items like this?
Yes, we we do uh proactive patrols through there and are pretty successful at getting voluntary compliance. And then the city does have park rangers in the uh summer hours that are out there proactively um making sure people are following within compliance, so there is a, there are people out there in an enforcement capacity, but many times just having that ability creates the uh the the desired result that we want. Keep them moving along.
Great, thank you.
And one more thing I did wanna add to this, uh when we're looking at these, uh and I I can't fully answer this question tonight, we we'll we'll get uh some more uh information uh this week, but essentially the fine amounts that are listed here, I can't say for certain that those will be the actual uh amounts that folks would pay uh through this process, and the reason why I say that is because there's a lot of other fees and assessments that the courts uh are allowed to uh uh basically assess uh with these types of things. So I'll give you an example, uh one of the um three infractions most recently cited for overnight camping uh referred to this uh the schedule, uh the state court rule schedule uh that had it down at as seventy-three uh dollars, which all the fine amounts in our particular court are come come up as one thirty-eight. So there is a dis- there is a discrepancy there, and I need to find out exactly what that is. I I wasn't able to connect up with uh uh Ms. French or Dot French over at the court today. Uh but uh we do need to figure out exactly what that would be, so that you know uh that if you're, for example, if you're deciding that you wanna do a class two versus a class three, uh that can make a significant difference uh in the fine amount, if if these additional assessments have to come on top of that, so that may be uh you may uh think that you're only charging someone a hundred twenty-five dollars, and that could potentially be a hundred ninety. So I wanna be able to answer that question for you, but uh we should be able to get that between now and uh when you'd like to move this forward, whenever that is.
Thank you. Now, if there's no further questions or comments, thank you for for that for that, Mr. Ferguson. We'll move right along um to item D. In Rija, it's about donation policy for acceptance of community donations. Do we have a problem with?
No, uh we do not, but we definitely need um a policy that is passed by or an ordinance that is pass-passed by the council. Um so as you know, uh city is uh occasionally uh receives donations. It could be land, equipment, uh or cash, and um usually it comes to the council for approval for for each and every item, especially when they're really big items, so uh what we're proposing with this ordinance is that we create a policy or essentially a procedure around it, so that uh the city manager can uh give you a list of all of the donations that have been done in an annual basis, so council is aware of uh what the city is getting overall, but that also we create some framework around it um so that you are not having to approve every ordinance that comes to, or every uh donation that is coming through the door. Uh but also that it can be done in a in a more timely fashion, um because we do have to do a workshop and then a resolution, um so that's about two weeks of of lag time, uh and sometimes maybe even more, depending on um the situation. So the proposal is um if council agrees to pass this ordinance, so we can um so we can um uh have a policy to accept it and come back to you um and report it on an annual or any other uh timely basis as council prefers.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Uh, Mr. Alvarado?
Uh, yeah, um, not, uh I have having yeah, definitely need to have a good policy for things like this, um not a hundred percent sure, I mean, in the short time that we've been here, and I don't know if any of this has come before us, so this probably may not be a very common uh occurrence of donations.
We do have some in the recreation, but recreation don't scholarships and and all of that is a is a different type of its own thing, uh but the last one that I do remember uh was a lift station, um that was possibly donated four or five years ago.
It was a partnership. Partnership, and we did, we did have a pretty significant donation of about a hundred thousand dollars as a seed money for the uh body worn camera program. And then the um the donation uh Director Sigdahl's talking about with relation to um scholarships and recreation, sometimes those are twenty-five or fifty dollars, and we're trying to avoid passing an ordinance every time someone gives us a certainly a hundred thousand dollars, you would hear about it. As as the council did last time.
Yeah, I think that that's kind of like making that distinction and making sure that we we, you know, it is that a a a sense of being above reproach, and I think having council co- co- coming through the council uh for large donations, I think might be a prudent thing to continue. That's just my thought.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Maloney, uh I guess we'll say it's a comment as much as anything, um would just be to um doing this, reporting on this on an annual basis, um may, I mean, that that I'm sure that's fine. Um and as any large donations will certainly hit our hit our nuts earlier than that. Um is there any value in putting it into one of our existing uh business processes where we already have reports coming to council um quarterly or or otherwise, for for example, um uh contracts between a hundred thousand and three hundred thousand? Uh it might might flow well for us to just add that to one checklist on something we already received, so we're not, we're not seeing a se- separate report.
Yeah, absolutely. We can do that on a monthly basis as well, as the council right now uh sees the um all of the contracts over a hundred thousand and less than three hundred thousand um in the monthly general fund report.
My my recommendation would be just to roll it into one of the existing reports, if at all possible, so we're not seeing a separate report, then we have questions on and we're uh you know, and it doesn't interrupt your business processes, then maybe it lost, thank you.
I agree. All right. Well, if there's no other comments or questions, thank you for that report, Rija. And we'll move right along to miscellaneous discussion. Um anybody have anything you wanna share, Mr. Zabel?
I I did have a few items, and uh first I wanna introduce a new staff member. She's been sitting out there all evening. Absolutely impressed by her staying power. And uh and the discipline of not moving her chair next to her husband, but uh but Kim Siemens, our new exec, uh excuse me, our new administrative two, which is journey level administrative professional. And she's in our HR department, and will also be serving as a backup to uh April, when April's out, vacation or what have you, so really excited to have her um join us and uh, gosh, it really bodes well. You you hung in there the whole meeting, that's very proud of that.
Thank you, and welcome to the city of Pasco. Uh looking forward to seeing more of you and uh and if you need anything, just just let Dave know. Thank you.
Okay, a couple of other things, uh city transportation uh master plans moving forward, we do have a few uh charrettes or open houses scheduled uh in the next few weeks, uh March eighteenth at the Court Starbucks. Uh we're doing a noon time meeting, uh basically eleven to one PM, and we'll get you information out on this, but uh Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, uh an evening meeting at the Coliseum, four to uh six PM, and then April fourth at the West Pasco Library of four to six PM. So there'll be some opportunity for uh public to weigh in. Uh a lot of what we're looking for in in these particular meetings are specific to multimodal bicycle, pedestrian, those type of things, and trying to identify those early on. There's also uh will be opportunities uh as we start to really put the plan together and uh get some analysis done for more formal open houses uh later this year, so. Just might wanna make council aware that process is continuing on, and then we did wanna add, and I I apologize, but uh things are breaking on the COVID nineteen uh issue, and so we wanted to kind of add that to our miscellaneous discussion, probably is gonna probably or probably will take uh maybe ten minutes or so, depending on what kind of uh council questions we have, but as council's aware, uh obviously, the COVID nineteen virus uh concerned to our region and uh left unchecked, it represents a humongous threat to uh community safety, so lots of entities involved in this situation. And uh we can talk a little bit about nationally and across the world, uh you know, World Health Organization and and CDC, those kind of things, but uh locally, we pretty much have two broad goals, I think most of the local agencies have been uh left with. One is to kind of help blunt the spread of virus, which that may be, that's a whole slew of uh best practices and dissemination of information. And also preparation for scenarios that include the presence of the virus in our community and how that uh might impact city operations as well as community members, and so those are things we're working on right now. Uh uh we've been coordinating with other local governments and service providers, uh planning for contingencies uh under different scenarios. Chief Gier actually began this effort with us uh about a year ago, uh in what's called a uh continuation of operation plan, or the COOP, we call it. Co- excuse me, continuity of operation. Uh, thank you. And uh we've been working on that. Actually, I've done some drills on that uh last fall uh at the management and and department head level, trying to underscore some of what we'd really have to consider. Uh we we probably at that point in time weren't looking at someone like, something like a virus. You know, we're looking at train derailments, things like that, but the the concept's the same, you know. We may lose pieces of our workforce, they might be unavailable to report to work, or we might lose the use of a facility like a city hall. What do we do? And so those are, those are some of the things we've been working with, um as well as uh you've seen a little bit of what we've sent out to to employees, we've been looking at uh practices and some of our policies, uh recognizing that uh we're probably gonna have to provide some more flexibility uh than what you would normally see. I mean, the chairs in the council uh chambers tonight are an example of some of the things that we're doing a little bit different to try to get that separation that folks are talking about. Those may not be necessarily six feet, but I don't see anybody out there sitting closer than six feet to one another, so. So people are getting why we're doing certain things. We we've upped in our public spaces a lot of uh our housekeeping efforts and so forth. And then certainly um in terms of communicating with the public. I'm gonna have Chief Gier provide us a bit of a high-level review of some of our current efforts, and then uh John Funfar is gonna come out and touch on some of the city outreach efforts as well. Council will indulge us a few more minutes. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Zabel. As, excuse me, as my cold, as Mr. Zabel stated, we did actually start uh doing, and we did, uh one of our simulation drills uh that we did as our continuity of operations was a flu outbreak that that reduces the workforce significantly um last fall. It was in my twenty nineteen goals from the city manager to develop that continuity of operations plan, so we've been working on it. Um it it's been very timely. Uh we've established a policy group that meets at the director's level and worked through many of the issues, especially related to sick leave use um and to working from home uh policies that uh we will finalize those on Thursday in a in a policy group meeting, and then actually uh assign a uh IS working team to get the work from home uh configurations put together. Uh we've ordered extra laptops early that were in the budget for this year, and we'll have those this week. So we'll be in pretty good shape for uh most of the employees that would need to do some continuation of work uh from home if we have to get to that situation. Probably the most likely scenario to put us in that is not necessarily widespread uh COVID nineteen in the city hall, but uh the closing of schools that would uh allow people to stay home and take care of their children uh under state law, and we would have to maintain some work from home capability. So I think we're really good shape there. Uh both police and fire have have been working last week quite a bit on on uh universal precautions. Quite honestly, the precautions that we're taking are not any different than we take at every year in the flu season. We we handle a lot of people that unfortunately have way worse diseases that we take to the hospital than than COVID nineteen, so uh it's not something we're not used to uh in the fire department. Uh we're tuning up the police officers a little bit. They gotta maybe stand back a couple feet extra, but uh we're working on that with them. Uh so I, overall, I'm I'm happy with the the situation we're in right now as a city. I think we're doing, I think we're doing pretty good is as as we kind of move through this developing uh situation. So unless there's any questions from council or anything else, which is able, you want me to expound on?
No, I, if maybe John, I know he's listening, come out and talk a little bit about uh from a public uh public relations standpoint, and while he's making his way out, one of the other policies we'll be working on is remote attendance for council uh to council meetings. We do have a policy. We do have a policy somewhat now, but it actually is legal for you all to attend remotely. But we have to have a room open that's available to the public. And it and and it has to be set up so that you can hear everything that's going on, any kind of testimony that we have. Uh, and that the public can hear you as well. So that's, that's a policy we would be working on over the next week or so as well. So with that, John.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, members of council. Uh, yes, we've been promoting mostly through the social media channels of the city. Uh, various updates from both uh federal, state and uh local authorities. Uh, earlier today, uh, there was a webinar hosted by the uh Benton Franklin Health District. At our own Ben Shear was part of as well. So uh basically, the messaging right now is the same as you heard from Dr. Person uh here. Last week, so uh that's the message that we have on our website, uh, along with links to both, as I mentioned, federal, state and. Local sources, uh, also in Spanish. And uh, yes, just trying to push out that message of mainly, you know. Hand hygiene as they're, as they're calling it now. And uh basically, yeah, just trying to uh mitigate as best we can. And getting that message out. And Twitter has been the primary uh method that we've been pushing out, just because as the news is developing so quickly. It it seems to be about the best avenue to to get the word out.
Yeah, one, just one comment on something John said. We have lent uh Ben Shear to the health department for this week because he has um. Experience on some larger fires we've been to and establishing what we call a J I C, a joint information center. And the health department wanted to to do that and didn't quite know how to do it, so Ben is helping them set up their joint information process and center uh this week.
Thank you, Mr. Gier. Mr. Serrano, you have a question or comment?
Uh, just a quick question, uh, probably to Mr. Zabel Ferguson or Mr. Gier, so somewhere along those lines. Is there any statutory authority or mandate where either Mr. Zabel is the executive? Or city council's legislative branch would have to make any type of declaration of emergency, or does that all flow down from the state?
No, it actually flows from the health department and and the state health and local health has all the statutory authority to order quarantines or. Uh, and and ordered quarantines versus self-quarantining are two totally different things and different rules. And and that's some of the employment practices that we're talking about. If a person decides to self-quarantine. Uh, what what are they eligible for reimbursement uh versus an ordered quarantine?
Okay, thank you. I guess to the extent there's anything that we have to do, just let us know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I guess in a similar similar vein, I know that some, uh, I don't know if it's a jurisdiction of the health department that chosen to. Uh, cancel certain events or things like that. Uh, how would that look like uh here? Who would make that decision? And then at what point should that decision perhaps be made? Um, we have a few events coming up and.
Under our continuity of operations plan, we have a policy team and the policy team is essentially made up of directors, legal and H R. And and we will be, uh, we'll be issuing our first policy paper from the team or from the policy group, excuse me. Um, under our plan, uh, Thursday after we meet on it and finalize it, that's gonna give some direction to all the employees on sick leave use. And working from home and and just exactly how we plan to to roll out over the next few weeks or months.
Thank you. That would include if uh if, let's say, this thing gets out of hand and we need to cancel events and things like that, we. Um, I guess my question is, is that that would be the body who makes that uh that determination?
As it, as it relates to working, you know, the operations, that would be the policy team as it relates to. We we would seek guidance, I think, on, you know, in terms of uh, you know, for instance, the uh. Open houses that I mentioned a few minutes ago. If we're getting word from the health department, those things, you know, and recommendations not to conduct. Public meetings like that, then we would do that. Otherwise, we'll probably take precautions similar to this. Uh, as well as uh our rec programs, uh, you know, the whole host of things that the city does and is involved in. And and I I think the, you know, with with regard to uh remote uh attendance at council meetings, that's something I would. Be bringing to you in the next uh probably two weeks from now at your next workshop, a policy on that. Not not suggesting that you do it, but just to have it in place so that we have the policy approved. And that that policy will talk about when it would be enacted. So I don't want folks to get the wrong impression that we're. Uh, not going to have city council here at city council meetings. That that is, I I would imagine that would be a pretty dire situation for that to happen. But you don't want to wait until it actually happens to try to figure out a policy.
Alright, thank you. Uh, Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so I've I've had the opportunity to get a lot more um information, I think, than some of my fellow council members. And members of the public, because I serve on the Franklin County Emergency Management uh Council. And so there's, I'm getting constant updates from from staff there. One of the things that I was thinking about as part of this, and it's very much in line, I think, with some of my fellow council members' comments. Would there be some value in setting up a subcommittee of the council to receive more information and be able to help engage in some of these policy and other decision? Factors, I mean, our our role as legislators, we we do have a specific both duty and uh and um. Um, I don't say expertise, but we have a, we have a function that we have, that we we serve. And maybe a small group of the council members, two or three of the council members may be able to help a lot with some of these decisions where it's not going to require full. Uh, public meeting and such. Um, do you have some thoughts on that, Mr. Zabel?
We could certainly bring something back to you and may maybe it's as simple as kind of walking through how that plan looks, because there is certainly a role for the council. In in an emergency situation. So we we could bring that back to you better, better, maybe our two week mark, when we bring that policy back to you, just to kind of go through the plan. Council can take a look at its adequacy at that point in time and then make some determinations themselves.
Because what I was thinking, I guess, um, in in addition to, um, obviously, there's a decision-making portion of that that I I. I feel more that what you're you're discussing in terms of a policy and plan are, um, and obviously, there's a lot that the whole council needs to make decisions on with that. But um, given that this is a rapidly um evolving situation, and certainly a couple of weeks ago was very different than it is today. Um, waiting for individual council meetings may take longer than um to to really start digging in and making some um recommendations. As uh for for the body. So that's why I was suggesting that perhaps a smaller, a smaller group of of council members might make a lot of sense for something like that. But I'm I'm putting it out there for a thought, not not a. I I I believe we should consider forming a small subcommittee.
Yeah, sure. That's, I mean, that's a policy decision as a city council. If council wishes to do that, we're happy to work with full council or as a subcommittee of the council.
So I guess my thought is similar to that, but it it's related. And, you know, Dave, I've kind of inundated you with emails. In the last few days about this issue and thanks for your patience. Um. So I spoke to Dr. Amy Person all last Friday and uh contacted uh Sean Davis from the Franklin County uh. Emergency ma- management, which I didn't know that Chief Gier, you guys are located pretty much in the same office. Uh, and had a great conversation with him. He provided me some pandemic stats and resources for planning and what they uh, the. Region had planned for back in two thousand and three, uh, when there was a potential anthrax threat. And the need that this year actually is the year that they're going to update that plan. Um, but I believe the council, um, Council Member Maloney, you're on that uh Franklin County Emergency Management. Uh, you're the rep for that and you meet quarterly, and I would agree that right now, probably a quarterly meeting is not enough. Uh, so one of the things that I asked uh Sean Davis to do is if he could come and present to us. And so they're on the agenda. He is on the agenda uh for Monday, the sixteenth, as well as Rick Edwards. From the Ben Franklin Health District. Uh, but I did want to share this with. Uh, fellow council members. Uh, this is from the Washington State Department of Health and I'll send it to you, to you. You may already have it, Dave. Uh, but it's the pandemic stats and resources for planning, and that talks about guide guidance for isolation and quarantine. And that being the State Department of Health's call and then our health district's from there, so. From what I gather, it's they're the lead agency and we take their, we take their um guidance. So, but if it helps for us to form a subcommittee, I'd be willing to be a part of that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Roach. And and we can certainly discuss that and uh and maybe bring it up as we bring up the uh policy and. And um, it it depends if the council wants to create a subcommittee at this point, uh, just something we can have a discussion on.
We we could, uh, Mayor, if you don't mind, we could probably, I I'm sure we can get Sean here next week.
Okay.
As early as next week to have a more detailed discussion in a, in a, I know it's a regular meeting, but we've got, you know, the presentation portion. We could have him give a a presentation to council, give you an update and uh and see where we go from there. In the meantime, that'll give us a little opportunity to get a, get some information together to council as to. More specifics on the um, uh, the coop and council's role in those kind of situations.
Can I just say one other thing? And thank you for taking the feedback last week about putting information on the front page of our city website. And I saw that that is there with, you know, just a blurb and appropriate links to State Health Department and to the Ben Ben Franklin uh. Health District. And so I thought that was very useful with appropriate information that's not, you know, with some sort of political bias on it. So thanks for that.
Alright, and I will uh also mention that uh I couldn't attend today. But um, all the, all the local agencies and Hanford uh leadership are taking a serious. A look and proactive approach to all this. I mean, you kind of touched on it, Mr. Zabel, but um, you know, we get all the different agencies together. To ensure that, you know, at some point, it can be expected it's gonna get here. Um, and and how are we gonna react to it and and make sure we mitigate and and do it what we have to do to. To take the best measures to keep everybody as safe as possible. So so it's, there's people moving, it's happening. And we're working on it. Just want to make sure the community is aware of that. Mr. Zabel?
If if there's no further questions, I do have one more miscellaneous item.
Okay.
Uh, just a quick update. I think Thursday is end of session uh for the state legislature and uh. Right now, we have two different versions, uh, same amount of money for Lewis Street i- in both the House and Senate budget. So that's gonna reconcile this week. Uh, our goal is to make sure nothing gets lost in the translation because of the two different versions. And then um, we also have some dollars, about three hundred fifty thousand dollars for uh improvements along um. Lewis Street between where the bridge will tie back into the original alignment of Lewis. And uh the intersection of uh Fourth and Lewis, so. Good news for council and and those are, those are surviving so far, so.
Awesome. Alright, thank you, Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I just, I just had two things I wanted to add as as part of the miscellaneous discussion. I believe on Thursday, the Pasco Chamber is having, hosting a business roundtable. Um, and I I think we'd be loathe to uh to miss that opportunity to for for council members in the city to hear from our our business community as well. It's obviously really important as part of our um listening sessions around the community. Um, and I I just, I just have to say again, I know we're all thinking it, but those those applicants for our Arts and Culture Commission were just fantastic. That was, I I was hoping for good things, and I think that exceeded every expectation I could have in terms of the diversity of thought and the perspective on that. And and how well spoken and passionate every single one of those um applicants were, so goodness gracious, I'm I'm really excited for that to get moving. Um, my daughters actually, and my my mother both actually, all three of them submitted to um. Um, to an art show, an art gallery, um, showing that's coming up on Friday. Um, and this is the first time for for any, for for my mother or from either of my daughters to submit a piece of art. So um, this is, there's a, there's a real personal connection to how these things are moving along and and how important it is for for everyone to have an opportunity to. To 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 be a part of arts in the community, so I'm just, I'm just excited. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney, for the comments. Alright, uh, if there's nothing else, we are gonna go to item six, which is executive session. And we do have a need for an executive session meeting. The city council will now meet in executive session. The purpose of this session is to consider acquisition of real estate. It should take approximately ten minutes. So with that said, we will be moving into the executive session. Thank you.